Oh, good, okay.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular manning of the City Council of the City of Victorville. At this point in time, we'll have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight is going to be led by Pastor Aaron Rodriguez, the youth pastor of CIO Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Victor Valley High School Junior ROTC, which will be doing the posting of the colors and the flag salute. So if you'd all please stand.
Good evening to all. I'm grateful to God for the honor that is bestowed upon my life tonight, and to the individuals who considered my name for such an occasion. 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, verse 1 teaches us that we should present supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving for all people, but especially for the kings and for all who are in high positions. As we gather here today to swear in the new City Council members, for the City of Victorville, I would like to invite you to bow your head with me and join me in prayer. "Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come; your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven." Today, as we come before you, we acknowledge your divine presence, and are grateful for the lives of every person in this room today. We are grateful for the lives of the existing council members who have served diligently: Rudy Cabriales, Jim Kennedy, Mike Rothschild, Angela Vaez, and Ryan McEchrone. We are especially grateful for the lives of Jim Cox and Gloria Garcia, who heeded the call to public service in our great city of Victorville, and chose the path of public servant. As we swear them in today, along with the continuing members of this council, we pray that you grant them the wisdom to rule our city with integrity, with dignity, and compassion, as they perform their civic duties on a daily basis. We pray they may seek the welfare of this city in which you have placed them, for in its welfare they will find their own and that of their families. May they remember each day, O Lord, that they are accountable to every citizen of this city, and that one day, we will all give account to you, O merciful God. We pray that when troubled and difficult times arrive, when ethical and moral decisions must be made, and when searching for solutions to the problems that plague and affect the confines of our city, that they may acknowledge you, humble themselves before you, and turn to you for guidance, as you are our wonderful counselor and the light of the world, the one and only mighty God of Israel, always allowing your word to be a lamp unto their feet. We pray today, O mighty God, a supernatural coverage over the continuing and new members of the City Council. Bless them and protect them, always in the palm of your mighty hand, along with each and every single one of their family members. We pray over this great city of Victorville and its inhabitants, that you, Holy Spirit, sweep through the city and bring a spiritual awakening, freeing us from all captivity, knowing that if we pray and repent from our ways, you heavenly Father are merciful and just, and you will forgive our transgressions and bring healing unto our land. We thank you, Lord, for your love and your mercy, and your divine providence, for the sacrifice of your Son, Jesus Christ, without which we would all be lost and living in darkness. Allow us to always remember and give you the honor and the glory in all that we do today, tomorrow, and the future to come. We pray all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Senior Master Sergeant Warren, United States Air Force. Tonight's color guard is commanded by Cadet Captain Daniel Garrett. If council members could please pull your chairs forward. Please place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing until the detail leaves the room.
Thank you. You may be seated. Let's give them a round of applause. All right. The first item on the agenda tonight is public comment, and I only have one card. Cujana Ariso? Oh, I'm sorry. Who won? Pull the microphone down.
May I ask you something? There is something going on, and I'm going to just say this. A parent's lost their four-month-old baby. CPS took their four kids. They had twins. They told the father, "Stay home. We're going to take the beds to you." CPS goes and takes the twins from them. I don't know what these parents had done so bad, but if you look at the court report, it insults my intelligence. What they're doing to these parents, they're young parents. I've known them for years, and they do not deserve what is going on. They're putting all their kids up for adoption. And I, as a citizen, American citizen, and as a citizen of Victorville, believe this is an injustice. This is our children that you ran away. And I need your help. If you cannot help me, I am going to the President, and I'm going to tell him what's going on. I've held those parents in my heart. I stood there when that father took that baby out of the car, hit the car, and carried his four-month-old baby and put her in the grave. CPS denied the baby the right to have her brothers and sisters there at her funeral. I'm asking for your help, and the people of Victorville's help, to bring this family back together, and to show these parents their hope. Those parents are going to be us one day, the old generation. And us old generation need to teach the young. I've lost my great-grandchild to crib death. I know that sting. I can only imagine theirs. Not only did they lose that baby to crib death, they lost all their babies. Can anybody understand that? Or do everybody have to have the sting of crib death to understand that pain? All I'm asking is for mercy, compassion. Where is it? There's no humanity. Please, I'm asking. I love Victorville. I love all the people, and I'll do my best to make it better. I won't break the law. I won't insult my city. This city is my city of grace. I've known it since the '60s. My great-grandchildren are raised here, my grandchildren. And these people who's... Forgive me, I'm just very devastated. I don't know what to do. I don't know who to turn to.
Well, if I could help, what I'd like to do is have our Chief of Police, Captain Don Yoder, give you his card, and you can talk with him. The City of Victorville has no control or jurisdiction over child protective services, but at least he can talk with you about that and hopefully get you some help.
They're going to get the parents some help. If not, the President will, and the Governor.
He's right in the back there.
And I have said everything you may have meant to vote for you, and I will challenge you.
All right. That was the only public comment card I have, so we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two. That is Statement of Election Results by our City Clerk.
The number of votes given in the city to persons voted for to office of member of the City Council in the general municipal election held November 6, 2012, was as follows: Byron Castellanos, 4,056; Jim Cox, 7,141; Sanford W. Kramer III, 1,197; Frank L. Atkins, 693; Melinda O'Connor, 4,608; Sean L. Hubbard, 1,834; Marshall J. Kagan, 3,329; Aaron Corn, 3,757; Gloria Garcia, 6,732; Curtis Green, 4,048; Ryan McEchrone, 5,850; Mike Rothschild, 4,518; Robert L. Laravee Jr., 638; Carlos A. Proano, 2,330. Total registered voters in the city, 41,478. Total ballots counted, 27,765. Voter turnout was 66.94 percent.
All right. Agenda Item Number Three is to adopt Resolution Number 12-067, entitled "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California, Reciting the Fact of the General Municipal Election Held on November 6, 2012, Declaring the Result and Such Other Matters Is Provided by Law." We do not have our screens tonight, so I'll entertain a voice, motion, and vote.
Move adoption of Resolution Number 12-067?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that resolution is adopted. All right, at this time, we do have some special presentations, so if you'll allow me, I'll go down in the front. All right, well, tonight is a very interesting night, because we get to bring on two new council members, but say goodbye to two long-term council members. And we want to recognize their service to this city, everything that they have done over the years, not just only serving on the City Council, but in their various roles on other committees that represent this city, other chambers of commerce, or other local organizations where they have served in a role that has represented this city, and ultimately just helped support the purpose of promoting job growth, and ultimately moving this city forward. So at this time, if I could ask Mayor Pro Tem Cabriales and Councilmember Rothschild to come down. Got a couple of special presentations for you. Mike, you first, because you've served the longest on the City Council. Twenty-four years of commitment and devotion to the City of Victorville and its citizens. Your dedication will remain a legacy. You've done so much for this city, and we appreciate all that you've done. By the way, I'm sure many of you know that Mike was a math teacher at Victor Valley High School prior to him being on the City Council, so he's served this city for many more years than that. Rudy, fourteen years of service on the City Council, but not only that, you served on the Victor Valley Water District Board of Directors, and as our first Fire Chief of the city. So you've served the city for in excess of thirty-some, thirty-six and a half years. So Rudy's been here a long time, and I suspect that Rudy's not going away. I think Rudy will continue to be involved, and so let's give him a round of applause. And I know we have some special presentations by the County Board of Supervisors.
Evening. The first one was Mike Rothschild. First one said, "Thanks for the support you gave to my kids at school." But this is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors of San Bernardino County. It reads, "County of San Bernardino Resolution. May unanimous consent, the Board of Supervisors of San Bernardino County, offer this resolution for your service to the community. Congratulations."
You don't have to read it, Gardner.
What makes you think I can read? But being an Air Force guy, a former Marine, I gladly present this presentation from the Board of Supervisors. Unanimous consent. Congratulations.
Well, thank you, Mike and Rudy, and we'll give you a few moments and a second to make some comments. But both of them have served this city well, as well as our country, as veterans in our military, and for that, they deserve another round of applause. So if you could... Well, this meeting is always ceremonial in nature, and we don't necessarily do a whole lot more than what you just saw, but, you know, we have a state championship football team in the house. Excelsior. Now, they are state champions in eight-man football. They're moving on to the full eleven-man football team next year, as I remember reading correctly. So I imagine you guys are going to carry this on, but if I could have you all come forward to get a picture, and we want to recognize you for everything that you've done in winning the state championship. So let's give them a round of applause and have them come forward. The football players are going to go get something to eat, I imagine. All right, as is tradition, as they're exiting, we do give an opportunity for those council members that are leaving the dais tonight to make some remarks about their tenure here, and their experience, and, you know, things that they have seen as they've served the City Council, the City of Victorville, and what they hope to see going forward. So with that, I will start with Councilmember Rothschild.
There. Don't turn it off on me. Yeah. I was a high school mathematics teacher for thirty-three years, but I also coached varsity football and track. I was a head track coach for a bit, but I was assistant varsity football coach, so I can appreciate their accomplishments, I assure you. Getting to any level of championship is remarkable. State championship is incredible. So I'll just mention that in passing. I also served thirty-three years, at your pleasure, as an elected official. Nine years on the Victor Valley Water Board, and right at the end of that time, transitioned into twenty-four years on the Victorville City Council. So thirty-three years of service, elective service in this community. And Terry Caldwell out there is the only one that's got seniority on me, and I appreciate the confidence the community has had in me over all these years, and the opportunity to serve. And I do mean that, that it is a service and a blessing to be able to be in that elective position and be responsible for you every four years like that. So having said that, I'd like to put a little bit of perspective on what I think are probably four major accomplishments in the last quarter of a century, or twenty years, if you will, for the City of Victorville. They're incredible, because each one of them not only points to an accomplishment that we did, but a future that lies in front of us with each of those. And the first one was obviously the transition of George Air Force Basin to what you now see in a remarkable airport out there. The old guard, as we were referred to, was Bob Hunter and Joanne Allman, and Terry Caldwell, and Rudy Cabriales, and myself. We went through many years together, structuring and building up the SCLA, the former George Air Force Base out there. Terry got it for $1.5 million, and it's worth a billion dollars today as we sit here, and going forward and growing. The four new hangars out there are all full and doing business. They belong to the City of Victorville. That is an incredible spot out there. It is an accomplishment, second to none in the state of California. I defy anybody to show me another brack closure that was produced this kind of success story out here. And it's, you know, California's a very difficult place to do business, but that base out there is going to be that one sweet spot in the Southern California region where people are going to want to come and do business in spite of California, not because of California. But associated with that as well, is what I think is probably a second significant accomplishment, and I say it to the council, even though I personally was the one that was mother-hitting that one, the air quality district. I sat on that for twenty years. The first three years of its existence, I was the chairman of that. And one of the first things I did when we got on there for that three years was get Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District out of the Los Angeles Basin. So in a two- or three-year period, we got ourselves separated. Frostley, Frickell, and I spent more time in Sacramento than we did in Victorville, but we accomplished that in a two-year period. That going forward is going to help us create jobs out here at SCLA, because coupled with that was the air quality transfer bill. Those sound like minutia to you, but what those mean is that people can leave Los Angeles and still do business up here in the high desert. That's what that accomplishment is. SCLA is going to be a point of focus for them as they come out here. They don't have to leave the state for all the air quality issues. So that twenty years that I served on that, at the pleasure of this council, by the way, is a significant accomplishment that is going to pay dividends into the future. Another one that I feel is an important one, and certainly there's one council member and one coming on that have a sense about this, is the City of Victorville taking both water districts and bringing them in as a department of the city is an incredible, and incredible, important going-forward moment where we can again deliver services to future businesses through that service, and that's under the umbrella of the city. And I think it's a very important asset that we have done over the last twenty years. And finally, the one that I feel is very important to me personally, is I had an opportunity to vote on this lawsuit that we had pending over many years. I want to remind you again how that was out. This council asked a question of Carter Burgess. The question was, can you, we do standalone electrical generation in Foxborough out there and deliver services to about five megawatts of customers. They lied to us. They came back with an answer of yes, because the corporate headquarters thought that was a good thing for them. They lied. They injured the City of Victorville, and they were our department. That was the question that was asked. We went through litigation. We won a landmark decision, as we sit here right now, that is going to benefit a lot of other cities out there that have to turn to the private sector and say, "We're not the experts in this. We can do this if you tell us it is good to go, but you've got to work for us and wall off your corporate headquarters from your local governments." That's the point of this lawsuit. It's not just the $54 million. It's the part about it being, you represent some area that we don't know, we're not experts in, and so we have to depend on you not to lie to us. They did. They were punished badly. The city received some of the remuneration back, the $54 million. That $54 million makes this city whole. It makes daylight in front of us. It makes an incredible opportunity for this city going forward. We have the greatest focal job out there at the air base. We've got the air quality credits that are going to now incentivize business to be here, and we've got money in the bank, all of those things that should be there for this new council. This is a clear vision going forward. So this is a moment in time when I feel very, very comfortable leaving the council and leaving the city in good hands. We've got a good council going forward, and I applaud them for that. So that's where my feel-good points are. And by the way, I do recommend that you put on your computers the High Desert Daily, Miguel's website. That's a positive website. It's always positive news in there, never negative, and it's all local. So go look it up. Stick it on your website there. And he's a good guy that's been around in this community and serving it well, and his website's serving it well, the High Desert Daily. So with that, I'm done, and thank you very much for allowing me to be on this dais for twenty-four years.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I borrow your notes, Mike?
Well, now, hold on, Rudy. Rudy, I have a few comments before you speak. You know, no mayor can serve in this position without having a Mayor Pro Tem. And I appreciate all that Rudy's done over the last two years, in those instances where I've needed someone to fill in for me. He's always been there. He's always actually been overwhelmingly there, even if I didn't need him. But the point is, is that, you know, Rudy's done so much for this community, and prior to even him being on this council, serving as the Fire Chief, and even previously, he ran the Water District Board, too. So you've done a lot in this community, but I just want you to know, from my perspective, you being my Mayor Pro Tem, I greatly appreciate all that you've done. So with that...
Thank you, Ryan. I agree with all the comments that Mike made regarding all these projects in the future of the City of Victorville. What I would like to do is, I would like to thank my family, my wife, all my supporters, my friends that have been around for all the projects and programs that we worked on, and the things we did for our community during the past thirty-six and a half years. I was doing the math before I came here, and I realized that actually I started my public service in 1952, when I joined the National Guard, and I've really been a public servant all these years, sixty years. In fact, it was December, I think it was December the 17th of 1952, when I joined the National Guard. And then in 1955, the Marine Corps, and got out in 1960, and I went into the fire service, and I did thirty-seven and a half years, my last twenty-one years here in the City of Victorville as the Fire Chief. So I've had a very rewarding experience here in the City of Victorville. I would like to thank my wife very specially, because she doesn't like politics, and unfortunately, for a couple of years here, we've had some, what I call, dirty politics, directed at me, which I have big shoulders, and I can handle those things, but unfortunately, there was a spillover into her, and I apologize to her for that. And I love her very much, and I respect her very much for standing by me during this period. But having said that, I did come to the City of Victorville in 1976, and I think it was like... in 1976. I think there was like maybe 13,000 people here. Jim hired me as a city manager, and I appreciate that. Terry was on the council, and was one of the votes that brought me here, and appreciate the friendships that we had all these years. It was a, it was a small city, but they were ready for a full-time fire department. They had a volunteer fire department. I was tasked with creating this fire department, professional fire department. So with a very small staff and the support of all the city, I was able to transition a volunteer department into a full, full-time professional department. Yes, while we were putting out fires, we managed to create this, this fire department, over 100 staff members, multiple fire stations. In 1994, we achieved a class-three fire protection rating. Just to give you an example, LA and LA City and LA County Fire Department are class-one. That's the highest you can get. So we weren't too far down the ladder from them, and I was very proud of that. Again, all these years, had to support the city staff. I appreciate their support. You have a great city here, and you have a great city because you have staff, senior staff, and you have employees of the city of Victorville that care very much for the city. In spite of the recession that we faced, and it was severe recession for the city, we're still, we're still operating. We're not bankrupt like many folks might, might have wanted us to be, but we're not. And we're going to continue to function and provide those services to this, to the, to the residents of this municipality, the city of Victorville. Again, we went through this recession. We were able, I think, in my opinion, that was my greatest contribution. I was the mayor from 2008 to 2010. That was when we were very severely impacted by the recession. We brought in Jim Cox as the city manager, and in a couple of years, we were able to do many of the things that we had to do. They're hard decisions, but we made them, and we're still afloat. We're, we have a good foundation. The city will continue to function way beyond where we've gone, all of us. He'll be here. And I'm very proud of my 36 years of service to the city of Victorville. And once again, I would like to thank my wife very much because I love her dearly, and she had to suffer, and, but we're tough, and we persevere. And after 60 years of public service, now I still have a few years left. I'm going to go into the private service and do something for a while. So anyway, thank all of you for attending the ceremonies here today. Welcome and congratulations to our new members of the council, and I know that you will do a good job for the city of Victorville. It's always, you know, it's doing the right thing. It's trying to find out what the right thing is. It's probably the hardest thing, but once you know what it is, it's so easy to make that decision, is finding that. And I, all my decisions that I made for the city of Victorville, whether it's the fire chief or on the city council or on the water board, when I served a couple of years on the water board, were always a decision based on what was best for the citizens of this community. They're the ones that I represent, and those are the ones that I am responsible for. So once again, thank you very much for being here tonight. It's a great day. You know, in other countries, when you have a change of government, you do it under fire, but here, it's a peaceful transition, and that's the way was our founding fathers, you know, who founded this or created the nation and established the laws, made it possible for us to do this. So once again, thank you very much, and my wife, I love you. Thank you.
Rudy forced me to make one other comment. My wife, too, has been suffering. I tell you, when the headlines come out there and you're, you know, and you're getting poked at or the editorial page, she's the same thing.
My wife, Vicki.
My wife, Jean, back there in the back, she's not unhappy about me not being on the firing line anymore either. That's, that's something for sure. She's always keeping me busy, but that's one thing for sure. You never think about the people in our family behind us. You know, you're always out here, and we're kind of tough. After a while, we get the, it rolls off of us. But the folks back home behind us are the ones that probably are happy to see us not be on this board now. And I know Jean is happy to see me come off. So anyway, just thought I'd add that to it. And I do love her very much as well. Thank you.
By the way, Ryan, I love my wife, too.
I don't think you're on this list to give a speech tonight. All right. At this time, we'll have our presentation of certificates of election by our city clerk.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to ask Jim Cox and Ryan McEckern to join me at the front of the dais. I'll present the certificates of election and administer the oath of office. Following that, Councilmember Vias will present the certificate of election and administer
All right, and now for, as Rudy alluded to, the peaceful transition of power. I will now call for the seating of the newly elected council members. All right. So now is the time for the newly elected council members to make comments, and I will start off with our newly elected council member, Jim Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make this very, very short. First of all, I consider this a great honor that the voters have, have given me. It's a humbling experience to run for city council, and I congratulate those individuals who stepped up and ran the campaign. I said from the beginning that it was going to be positive. We need to look forward. We need to build a future. And I am going to do my best to carry out those things that I promised while I ran for this office. We are going to be positive. Economically, we are looking up already. We have a good council, and I know we're all committed to working very, very hard for the betterment of this community. I assure you, I will work hard, as Rudy said, to do the right thing and make the right choices. I will do my best not to let you down. Thank you so much.
I would like to thank all my supporters, family and friends, for their vote and faith in me. I will stand by my campaign promise to put public safety first, roads and youth activities. I am looking forward to working with all council members to make Victorville a safer and better place to live. And I also promise to do the best that I can for the city and the people of this community, and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Wow. Well, both of you as politicians don't speak a whole lot, so I will take up your time, I'm sure. I have served for four years on the city council, and I'm grateful that the citizens of Victorville have elected me to another term. I think there's a lot more to be done here, but I will tell you that first and foremost, I need to thank my wife, Jennifer, who's here tonight, for her support. She has been there with me through thick and thin over the last four years, especially the last two years, not only as the mayor, but running for Congress. You know, it's amazing how a person gets attacked these days. I had the opportunity to visit with our former mayor, Terry Caldwell, on this issue, and he shared with me that, you know, back in his day as the mayor, there was no Facebook. There was no tweeting. There was no, you know, blogging online about everything that you did. And, you know, the people that do those type of things could not be anonymous. They actually had to come before you at the dais or actually had to put their name to an editorial in the paper. But today, we live in a different world, and the attacks that have come against me, as well as my wife and our family, are completely unfounded. And it's amazing that what people will stoop to in this day and age to, to undermine what you are trying to do for your community. But throughout all of that, we have persevered. I do believe that Victorville is in a better place than it was four years ago, and I truly believe that in four years from now, we'll be in even a better place. That is why I chose to run for reelection. I'm thankful to the voters and the citizens of Victorville for re-electing me to the, the city council, but there's still more work to do. And I'm grateful that we have so many of the candidates that chose to run here tonight, because I hope that you will continue to be, continue to be engaged. We need you. Quite frankly, there's so much work to be done here at the city that the five of us, no matter how hard we work, it cannot be done. We need people like you, people like the rest of you in this audience, to, to be engaged and be involved and, and to help us move this city forward. You know, I'm hopeful that with this new council and, and all the, the great things that are going on in the city of Victorville, that we can move forward, that we can forget about looking at the past all the time. You know, we have done that for so long, and it is time for the city to move forward. And I believe that, that now is a better time than ever for that to happen. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve as the mayor over the last two years. It has been a challenging and rough time, but it has also been very rewarding. You know, people ask you, how much time do you spend in this position as the mayor? It could be anywhere from 40 to 60 hours a week. It just depends upon what demands are put on you. And so, you know, you don't know that coming into this job, and I don't think that anyone can, but at the end of the day, it's very rewarding because you get to serve the people and, and do, do what it is that the people want you to do. So I'm grateful for the opportunity. I thank this council, the previous council, for choosing me to serve in that position, and I look forward to serving you over the next four years on the city council and again, helping to move our city forward. So thank you again for the opportunity.
At this time, I will call for nominations for mayor. At the close of nominations, I will then ask the council to vote on each of the nominees for appointment to the office of mayor. Nominations are now open.
I would like to, city clerk, if I might, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Jim Kennedy to serve as our mayor.
I'm going to decline the nomination. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, but my travel schedule and various other things make it almost impossible for me to do that job properly.
Nominations are still open.
I'll nominate Jim Cox.
Any other nominations? If not, nominations are closed.
Any other nominations?
There are a motion and a second to appoint Jim Cox to the office of mayor. Motion and a second to appoint Jim Cox to the office of mayor.
Yes, that's a motion.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thought I did.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jim Cox has been appointed to the office of mayor.
That's it?
Yeah. You've never held it before. You've never held it before.
Well, I have another item here, and before I do that, I'm not going to make a speech. It's not, thank you very much. It's not what I say, it's what I do from this point on. The next, excuse me, the next item on the agenda for tonight's meeting is calling for the nomination for the mayor pro tem. And that, we call for nominations at this time.
I'll nominate Ryan McEckern.
I'll second that if it requires a second. Are there any other nominations? There are no more nominations, and the nominations are closed. I call for, that was a motion. I second that. I call for the vote for mayor pro tem. Please vote. Aye.
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 Are there any others? It is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. McEckern. At this point in time, thank all of you for being here. I believe that we have, do we have refreshments?
Yes, we do, in conference room D, the large conference room just across the way from the council chambers.
And we will, we will adjourn this meeting, but we'll be in the conference room. We invite you all, and thank you very, very much for coming tonight. I think we're going to have a good future, and watch us closely. Make us produce. Make us do what we have promised to do. Thank you.